Good evening. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular City Council meeting of May 8th, 2017. The time is a little after 7:30 PM. We're starting a few minutes late because we were meeting with our special attorney, Hugh Thomas, who will give a presentation later tonight. But could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Ian Mirhan.
Yes, I'm here. Let's see, what's next? Who's giving the invocation tonight? Oh, Margene, would you please rise if you're able and willing for an invocation to be given by Councilwoman Scott and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, as we near the celebration of Mother's Day this Sunday, we thank you for the love of the mothers you have given us, whose love is so precious that it can never be measured, who cared for us when we were helpless, whom comforted us when we were hurt, whose love and care we often took for granted and for our mothers we have lost, but who still remain in our hearts as a precious gift. We pray that you remember and thank them for teaching us the virtues of sacrifice, sharing, valuing others, compassion, the spirit of community, and learning to live together in peace and harmony. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I deliver this blessing to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? All right, we have one presentation tonight for National Public Works Week. Mr. Myers, will you give the report?
Certainly, Your Honor. Whereas the public work services provided in our community are an essential part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water distribution, sewer maintenance, stormwater management, streets and highways, public buildings, fleet maintenance, parks, recreation, and solid waste collection; and whereas the health and safety and comfort of our community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and services, as well as their planning, design, and implementation, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of our Department of Public Services employees; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude toward and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Madison Heights does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions that our public services employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And, Your Honor, DPS Director Vitale is here to accept the proclamation.
Mr. Vitale, please. We have a public hearing tonight regarding the fiscal year 2018 budget resolution and tax levy. We'll begin with the presentation from the City Manager, then I will open a public hearing.
Yes, Your Honor. The fiscal 2018 budget workshop was held on April 26th, 2017. This public hearing is scheduled to receive public comments on the proposed budget, to appropriate funds, to establish the tax levy for the budget appropriations, and to approve changes to department fees. Pursuant to Section 8.4 of the City Charter, a resolution has been drafted which, if approved, will adopt the fiscal 2018 budget, appropriate the funds, levy the property tax, and approve several fee adjustments. Following the public hearing, I recommend that council approve the fiscal year 2018 budget resolution, and I would note that City Charter 7.6, subsection B, requires a supermajority of five votes to appropriate funds and set the tax rate for the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. All right, I'm opening a public hearing. Would anyone like to discuss the fiscal year 2018 budget resolution and tax levy? This is a public hearing for this specific subject. All right, thank you. No one's asked to be recognized. I'll close the public hearing. And what's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council approve and adopt the proposed 2017/18 budget and including the levy attached to it.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Is there discussion on this item? All right, the motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve and adopt the fiscal year 2018 budget resolution and tax levy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Motion carries 7 to 0. Reports on the agenda of interest to parties and audience. All right, next we'll go to meeting open to the public. However, I would like to begin public comment with a special report from Hugh Thomas, our special environmental counsel. Good evening, sir. Thank you for joining us. Either way, I told him I had a question.
The city is at, right now, making a news release, which I'm going to read. On April 12th, SACRA, Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, advised the city of Madison Heights that, starting May 1st, it planned to open its waste transfer station in the city, including the old, unused, and unmaintained incinerator building, to members of the public for the dumping of construction and demolition debris and yard waste. Based solely upon the city's concern for public safety, on April 26th, the city's fire chief and building official inspected the building and the surrounding property to make sure that it would be safe for public use. They, in fact, found over 50 clear violations of the city's fire prevention and protection ordinance and dangerous and unsafe building ordinance, and concluded that several of the violations presented immediate hazards to anyone in the building or on the property. Among those immediate hazards were likely asbestos exposure, possible building and chimney collapse, open electrical wires, and inoperable fire sprinklers and fire alarms. As a result, the fire chief and the building official ordered the building and property immediately vacated and all access locked until the violations are eliminated by SACRA. Instead of proceeding to correct the violations, on May 5th, SACRA filed a lawsuit against the city and its fire chief and building officials alleging that they lacked authority to immediately close the area regardless of the seriousness of any safety hazards to the public who will be visiting the site, that the city and its inspectors are barred under state law from regulating SACRA's facility in any manner, and that despite the known hazards, the property should be immediately opened to the public. The city believes that SACRA's position is, in fact, contrary to the law and flies in the face of common sense. The city intends to keep SACRA's clearly hazardous property locked until all of the public safety violations are corrected and to defend its right and primary obligation to do so in protection of the public from known safety hazards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The content of Mr. Thomas's statement will be in a formal press release, which will be available from the city, and we do encourage and we will direct comments to be sent to Mr. Thomas on this subject. So as I said, the meeting is open to the public. This is the opportunity to discuss any issue. If you'd please be so kind, it's not required, but it'd be helpful if you give your name and address for the record. And welcome. Good evening, Ms. Mark.
Hello, I'm Gloria Moore. I live at 27368 Dartmouth. That bit of news was a bit startling. It'll take a while to digest all that. Friends of the Madison Heights area senior citizens is going to have another third Tuesday meeting at May 16th at 7 o'clock, and it's over at Wilkinson. Coffee and snacks will be on us. Everyone is welcome to come. Also, I noticed that in Facebook, Mary Bush had mentioned about what to do about the Kmart property, and I thought that she had a good idea of having smaller shops into the Kmart property. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Good evening, Mr. Morrison. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Al Morrison. I live at 26668 Towne lead in Madison Heights. I just wanted to come up and thank you all for your hard work, your dedication, and I feel like we're moving in the right direction. We have an outstanding police chief and outstanding fire chief, and I appreciate the hard work that every single one of you do every single day. I just wanted to clarify that to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Stay for some praise. Ladies and gentlemen, obviously everyone knows Al Morrison, president of the School Board of Madison Public Schools, but thank you for hosting the really wonderful Family Festival last weekend. And also, is it appropriate to talk about the K to C drive?
Sure.
Please, the floor is yours.
We started a fund, which actually has gotten a lot of press, where we've gone to private donors to donate, to start a bank account for every person in the district, every student in the district of Madison schools, starting from kindergarten on. Our goal was directly to, for kindergarten only, but after a fundraiser that you graciously attended, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, we exceeded that goal and then some. So we're actually at the point where we can start a bank account for every child in the Madison School District, and each point throughout their career will add money to that fund. And the parents are encouraged, aunts, uncles, cousins, friends, birthdays, they can also deposit, as long as they stay throughout their career in the Madison School District. At their graduation, they'll be given a check for either their college tuition, or their career fund, or whatever they feel is appropriate for them to use it for. If they leave, whatever money is deposited by them, they take with them. Whatever money the district deposits goes directly to the other kids in the school district. It's grown some great national attention, and we really appreciate everybody's support for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The meeting's still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any issue? Good evening, Mr. Kepke.
I just have a question. Who owns this SACRA site? The county?
Good question. Mr. Myers, do you have an answer to that?
Yes, SACRA owns that site.
The county? Oakland County?
The question.
Who owns it already?
Who owns the SACRA site?
The Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, which is 12 million acres, spans an acreage of 1,000 hectares since 1997. So it's glorious, glorious. It's a public or private we own?
It's a public. SACRA is a big city, and it's certainly not a private town, but it's owned by that authority. It's managed to itself. Not a private business. 12 million acres.
All right. Meeting's open to the public still. Any other comments?
Rosalind Grassing, I have a question also about SACRA with this.
Can you direct a question to me, and then I'll try to find the appropriate person to answer it? Thank you.
Okay. So the violations are, are they city violations? Are they county violations? Are they, they are city violations? Okay, so they are city ordinance violations, but it's an entity that has been created by the state? So...
Yes, the inspectors were inspecting the facility for compliance with two city ordinances, the dangerous and unsafe building ordinance and the fire prevention and protection ordinance. Those are City of Madison Heights ordinances, which have been on the books for years, and we, the city, is authorized by state law to administer safety controls, safety controls on that facility. There are some things we can't do under state law, but that is one of the things we can do.
So, under state law, the city was within its rights to protect our citizens by locking the doors and saying, "Clean this up."
That's our belief, but SACRA says, "No, we're not entitled to." So that's something that the judge will have to decide. But we feel very confident that we have the authority.
So in theory, if our building code and fire code, our alleged violations are satisfied and remedied, then that's the end of our authority?
So if SACRA comes in, cleans this up, they can then start accepting?
Oh, yes, yeah.
And if they...
But it requires more than just cleaning up. It will require tearing down the stacks or completely rebuilding them, but I think they would tear it down, doing a structural analysis of the rest of the facility, and a myriad of other things to bring it into shape. But if they do all that, which we've asked them to do, then, yes, they'd be in compliance with our ordinances, and it would open up again.
When was the last time the facility was checked for violations?
Was what?
When was the last time it was checked for violations?
I'm sorry, I can't...
When was the last time the city inspected the SACRA facility?
Oh, the city inspected it was, the last time prior to this was actually the morning before the flood in the afternoon, so it was August 11th, I believe, of 2014. And at that point, we issued, the city issued a notice of violation and demanded a structural analysis of the building and the stacks. SACRA resisted that, and because they had no plans to use the building, we kept trying to get them to do the structural analysis because we were concerned about it. And eventually, when they told us in April this year that they were going to be having the public bring in this waste into the property, into the building, we said, "That's it. We've got to protect the public." And that's when we asked the inspectors to go in and form a professional opinion, and they did, and they closed the property.
Okay, so just to clear this up in my head, in 2014, no one was going into the buildings?
I'm sorry, nobody was what?
Going into the buildings.
No, no, they weren't.
Okay, so the city did not pursue that because...
And in fact, the public wasn't using it at all.
Right.
The only thing that was, at that time, that was going on, other than the flood, which was for like three weeks, they put everything, even that didn't go in the building, it went into the property behind. And the only use that had been made of the facility from 2005 until what they were proposing to start last Monday was dumping of leaves by waste haulers, not by the public, in the back and transferring it. So the public, to the best of my knowledge, and I've been working on SACRA issues for 30 years, they've never allowed, until now, the public into the facility, and that was a major concern to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting's open to the public. Any other comments? All right, thank you. We'll continue on with our agenda. Next item for consideration will be reports and D1 from the City Manager, the Welcoming City Resolution. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. At the regular meeting of March 13th, Mayor Hartwell requested that council consider a welcoming city resolution. The purpose of the resolution is to declare Madison Heights as embracing all persons, both foreign-born and native-born, and recognizing the values and contributions that everyone can make to our community, which is enriched through diversity and inclusion. Presented for council's consideration this evening is a proposed resolution which includes the following. One, the original language suggested by Mayor Hartwell, based on the City of Royal Oaks resolution. Number two, a staff committee substitute option to simplify the city's commitment to promoting inclusion by omitting the references to policies and practices and membership in the Welcoming Cities Initiative. And three, an option incorporating a council suggestion to not condone illegal immigration or discount the efforts of those documented immigrants in our community.
All right, thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I would move that the council adopt the resolution. At least for discussion purposes, I would recommend the following options be included. What is on our list is A2, which is a simplified commitment. And I would incorporate option B, which I believe was recommended by Councilmen Soltis and Bliss. I'm not sure how that neatly knits together with all the B resolutions, but I will assume that the wordsmiths will accommodate that. So I would move that we adopt the resolution, we incorporate A2 and B.
Thank you, sir. Is there support? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Soltis. Support. Thank you. Obviously, a motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to adopt the welcoming city resolution, including options A2 and B. Is there discussion? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 7 to 0. Next report is D2 from the Community Development Director, the 2018-2020 Cooperative Agreement with Oakland County, Urban County, CDBG Agreement.
The Oakland County Community and Home Improvement Division has requested the city to renew its three-year cooperation agreement with Oakland County for participation in the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, federal funding through the Urban County CDBG program. The alternative would be to opt out of the county program and make application for the Small Cities Program funded through the State of Michigan. Continued participation in the Urban County CDBG program ensures CDBG funding for the city in the future, to the extent authorized by Congress. On the other hand, the Small Cities Program funded through the State of Michigan is competitive, and the city has no assurance that a submitted application would be funded. While the eligibility criteria are the same for both programs, the selection criteria used by the state are based on a statewide competitive point system, would entail far more administrative burden on city staff and is not assured. The city's participation in the Urban County CDBG program has resulted in a cumulative total of over $6 million in federal funding for CDBG programs in the city since 1983. CDBG funding for the current fiscal year summarizes as follows: code enforcement in the amount of $92,950, and public services or yard services at $17,332, for a total of $110,282. In addition, over the last three years, the Home Improvement Loan Program has awarded over $500,000 in loans to assist low and moderate income residents with needed home upgrades. This is federal money that's in addition to the annual CDBG allocation that I just noted earlier. A standardized HUD-approved form resolution has been provided for City Council's consideration. Staff and I would recommend that the city continue under the Urban County CDBG program, and specifically, we would recommend that council approve the resolution to participate in the Oakland County CDBG program for the program years 2018 to 2020, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement, and authorize the clerk to sign and certify the resolution. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council approve the resolution participating in the Oakland County CDBG program for years 2018 through 2020, and that we further authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement and authorize the clerk to sign and certify the resolution.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Clark, to approve the resolution to participate in the Oakland County CDBG program for years 2018 to 20, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement, and also authorize the city clerk to sign and certify the resolution. Is there any discussion? Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next report is D3 from the DPS Director regarding the summer maintenance agreement. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Provided for council is the 2017 Summer Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County that covers 14 mile, 12 mile, and John R. from 14 mile to the drain. Under this contract, the city provides street sweeping, weed and grass mowing, and litter pickup along Lees County roads. The good news is this year that the Road Commission has increased the summer sweeping rate from $99 to $155 per curb mile, resulting in an increase to the city funds of 24.2%, which is reflective of the county's current bid for vendors. Staff and I recommend the council approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we approve the 2017 Summer Maintenance Agreement, and then authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Support.
Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the 2017 Summer Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, next order of business will be approving the minutes. Can I have a motion regarding the minutes of April 24, 2017?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
I'd make the motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 24, 2017 be adopted as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sherman.
I have one proposed revision to the minutes. I'm scrolling through to find it. It is, it's on page 17, item CM17-111, should read that the motion by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to move to close session was to discuss legal opinion, not pending litigation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clark, would you accept that proposed revision in your motion? Mr. Corbett?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the motion made by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilman Corbett, is to adopt the minutes with the one proposed revision regarding, on page 17, C111, to change the language to discuss a legal opinion and not pending litigation. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I please have a motion regarding the minutes of April 26?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
I move that the minutes of the 26th be approved as printed, sir.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor of adopting the minutes as printed from April 26, 2017, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, next we'll go to appointments to boards and commissioners. We do have several tonight. We have two new applicants to the Crime Commission. They're both mayor's appointments. So I'll throw it out there for council to accept. Let's see, I would nominate Deliza Lee and Janice McKidden to serve both as alternates on the Crime Commission for terms expiring April 2019. That's Deliza Lee and Janice McKidden.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Corbett?
I would move to accept the mayor's nominations, which he's welcome to pronounce. I mean, no disrespect, but without that in front of me, I don't want to get in trouble.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis.
Support.
All right, the motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to adopt the mayor's appointment of Deliza Lee and Janice McKidden. to adopt the mayor's appointment of Deliza Lee and Janice McKidden to the alternate seats on the Crime Commission for terms to expire 5/6/19. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, they're both appointed. Okay, there's another mayor's appointment. Would council please consider my appointment of Erica Bednarski-Smith to serve as an alternate on the Parks and Recreation Board? It'd be a term to expire April 2018.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I would be happy to move to confirm that nomination.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor of appointing Erica Smith as an alternate on the Parks and Recreation Board for a term to expire 4/15/18, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. There was another applicant to the Historical Commission, but it's not a mayor's appointment, so it was Deliza Lee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
I would like to put into motion that I would like to appoint Deliza Lee to the Historical Commission for a three-year term with expiring 2/28/19.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. The motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Deliza Lee to a three-year term on the Historical Commission, a term expiring February 28, 2019. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. I didn't see any other applicants. Did anyone else see any applications?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clerk?
I think, wasn't there one for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority?
Yeah, thank you. Good catch. That's a mayor's appointment, so would someone please accept my appointment of Ricky Bustler to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Downtown Development Authority? He's currently on there, and it'd be a new term, a new four-year term, to expire in 2011 to 2021.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Move to reappoint Mr. Bustler to a term on the Brownfield Redevelopment Downtown Development Authority for a term which will be expiring in June of 2021.
Yeah. Okay. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Support.
Any discussion on this? All in favor of appointing, reappointing Ricky Bustler to a four-year term expiring June 19, 2021, to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the DDA, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Motion carries. He's appointed. All right, everyone's been appointed. Any other applicants? All right, seeing none. We have no further business on the agenda, so before we move to adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from City Council. We'll begin with Mr. Corbett.
Two quick items, just to mention that again on this Friday and for a couple more Fridays, we'll be at the library from 1 to 3, keeping office hours for City Council. The other thing I was going to say, and I might, I might need either Mr. Vitale or Mr. Myers, I had gotten a question earlier in the week about the dates and how long the wood chipping or the branch chipping was going to be going on, and then I just, on my way out tonight, I saw it on the website. Could you just briefly, just two minutes, just what's allowed, and hopefully the lady's watching, and how long it will be for?
Your Honor, counsel, this week, the entire week, it's free brush chipping week. That brush will be picked up as part of your regular garbage pickup schedule. On most days, we will get into the next day's route, like, for example, we got into Tuesday's route, but we will start back over on Tuesday, the regularly scheduled day. So there's a few requirements, just to stack the brush neatly out on the right-of-way. We try to ask that residents put the clean-cut ends basically facing towards the road. It makes it a little easier on my staff to chip, and that will run all week, so any brush piles that are put out this week will get picked up.
Hopefully, the lady was watching. Thank you, sir. That's all.
Your Honor, just to add to that, the free brush chipping is associated with our Spring Cleanup Day, which we're publicizing now, and that's scheduled May 13 from 8:00 a.m. to noon down at the DPS yard at 801 Ajax. Residents are encouraged to bring their household debris, including things that are not normally taken at the curb, like concrete, stumps, and root balls. No household hazardous waste, no e-waste, or contractor debris. So we're looking to resurrect the program that we've had for a number of years and hopefully get our neighborhoods cleaned out, which is a benefit to everyone. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Just really quick tonight, I don't make it a point to comment on pending litigation, so I'm not going to do that tonight, but I would like to encourage the public to view and read the press release regarding the Sacra site, the smokestacks, and the safety dangers that exist within. Please, please read that. Direct any questions to our special environmental counsel, Mr. Thomas. It's a very, very big issue. It's very complex. I would encourage everybody to read that press release. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Geddings?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Couple quick comments, Mr. Mayor. First of all, kudos to Councilwoman Scott on her beautiful Mother's Day invocation, and happy, happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. As council knows, my mom and my mother-in-law, we lost both of them in the last year and a half or so, so we miss them every day, but particularly Mother's Day. Secondly, I want to thank, I want to thank our special environmental counsel, Hugh Thomas, for being here tonight. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Prince?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Oh, I'd like to echo the thoughts of a couple of the people that thanked Hugh Thomas. He's done a lot of work for us, and hopefully this time, it's really going to pay off as far as Sacra and the sacks, stacks being taken out of there. Thank you, Hugh.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Scott?
Yes, thank you, City Attorney Sherman, for recognizing that. I was thinking particularly of your beautiful mother, Esther Sherman, in that, and also Vera Morrison, Al's mother, who was very close. And so many of us have lost our moms, me included. My grandsons lost their mother when they were only teens, at an early age. So I know that Mother's Day is special, but sometimes it can be very poignant and hard to get through, but I think we have to look at the good that they did for us in our lifetimes, and thank God that they were there. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Soltis?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I also want to thank our special environmental counsel, Hugh Thomas, for your presentation tonight and for all your service, and thank you to the staff for getting council and the city through the budget process. I kind of got buried under the lead of our environmental issue tonight, but thank you. We just set a path for the next 12 months of all of our budget and policy priorities, so thank you very much. Is there any further business before City Council tonight? All right, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Good evening.